In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA 10-4-6 PL 1975 C 231 S 1 amended in 2006 C 7DS 2, the Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending a notice of the time, date, location, and to the extent known the agenda of this meeting to the Asbury Park Press and the new poster on January 8th, 2021 via email. Copies of this notice have also been placed at the administration buildings, bulletin boards, district schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the city clerk on January 8th, 2021. The mission of the Asbury Park Public School District is to provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skill and character to succeed in diverse, evolving global society. Roll call, please, Mr. Hastings.
Okay, we're gonna do the roll call. Everybody is muted. Please unmute yourself. Stay here and then re-mute, please. Ms. Chavez Anderson?
Here.
Ms. Breach? Ms. Cook? Ms. Cook?
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Grove?
Here.
Mr. LaRocco?
Here.
Mr. Remy?
Here.
Mr. Saunders? Ms. Lozinski?
Here.
And Ms. Tien?
Here.
We can please raise for the rise for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so tonight, we're gonna have a quick presentation. We're gonna do that right now, so we get it out of the way.
All right, we have Mr. Jerry Conity. He's a partner at Holman Friendee Allison. They're our audit firm. They come out to the district each year and conduct our annual financial audit. They spend a couple of weeks at the beginning of the summer. They spend some time in the fall going through all our financial statements and our accounting systems, review our purchase orders, review our grants and our compliance issues, and then issue their report, the CAFER, or our annual financial report. So on the agenda tonight at 7:00 PM will be the acceptance of the audit for the board to vote on. That's a document that we need to then provide to the county and upload to the the annual report repository with the state, so it's available to the public. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Conity, so he can give you the impressions from the auditor and give you a snapshot of the audit for the year ending June 30th, 2020. And then after his presentation, he's obviously available for any questions you might have. Jerry?
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Hastings. Thank you very much for having me here virtually tonight, everybody. We're here a little later than we prefer to be. Unfortunately, the state of New Jersey kind of delayed all school districts across the state of New Jersey. We've been waiting on reports for them to issue. They have, normally our audit is due by December 5th. Given the delays from the state of New Jersey, as well as complications from COVID-19 this year, they've extended that deadline to February. So although we're here tonight, we are timely with all statutory requirements and filings. So there's two places like I generally like to refer people to. If you take nothing else away from the presentation tonight, the first of which is on page one of the report, which is referred to as the letter of transmittal. And then page 19 of the report, which is management's discussion and analysis. Those two schedules or letters in the audit report, although they're unaudited, they give a nice, clear snapshot of the financial statements and the district as a whole. It kind of shows where the district was over the past year, how they got to where they are at year end, as well as gives you a little bit of a picture of where the district's heading moving forward and some of the major initiatives that are going on. I'm happy to report that we have an unmodified opinion on our financial statements. That is the best opinion that we can give, saying that there are no modifications necessary to bring us into compliance with generally accepted accounting principles. At year end, what I really just want to kind of make mention of tonight, obviously, as you have your budget season kind of rolling around, is where the district stands with its fund balance at, at June 30th, 2020. So total fund balance was $11.6 million. Of that, we had about $1.9 million set aside in some reserves for capital maintenance and extraordinary items. We had about $161,000 of encumbrances that were outstanding at year end. We also had allocated, when the board approved its fiscal year '21 budget, the board had approved utilizing about $4.2 million of fund balance in the fiscal year '21 budget. It left about $1.25 million of unassigned fund balance. That's the maximum that is allowed to be kept on hand at year end. And then it left excess surplus, it's referred to as $4.15 million. So pretty consistent with what you had utilized in your fiscal year '21 budget. That's the amount that the district will be required to utilize when balancing the 2022 budget. One thing I do want to just make mention of, we talked with Mr. Hastings and the administrative team about the food service fund. There was a big loss in the food service fund this past year, which we've seen most of the school districts that we've seen, obviously, with the decrease in the usage there. So just to make sure that we're monitoring that as we're going and making sure that that should transfers be necessary, that we're making whatever transfers that are needed to make sure that that fund stays whole. We also had to perform a lot of additional testing on our federal and our state grants, which is referred to as a single audit, which is an additional layer of testing over and above just a financial statement audit. I'm very happy to report that in all of our testing, we had no comments or recommendations. Everything went very smoothly, especially given our COVID situation that we've been working through throughout the audit season. So before I open it up for questions, I really do just want to give, I say it each year, but I really have to give a big heartfelt thank you to Jeff, Mr. Hastings, Ms. Ivy, Ms. Gray, and all of their staff. It was a very complicated year to be doing an audit during, and nobody ever wants to see the auditors. So I can't thank you guys enough for all the courtesies extended to myself and my team throughout the process. So I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody may have, if they have any.
Okay, I don't see any questions at this point. The audit has been provided to all the board members for the review. And obviously, as you get time to go through the document or have questions that come up, you can certainly come visit us at central office or shoot me an email, and we can arrange, you know, a conversation with the auditor, myself, and the board member to get those questions answered, and also, obviously, forward those questions and answers to the rest of our board. So at this point, if we don't have any questions for Mr. Conity, I'd like to thank him and his firm for their professionalism and, again, working with us through the various COVID restrictions and scenarios, and working with us in terms of getting paperwork back and forth electronically instead of visiting us in person. And then we appreciate all the effort they put in to making sure that our filings were on time. Great. Jerry, thank you so much, and we'll be in touch soon.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.
At this point in time, we're gonna do the committee reports. Connie, can you speak?
Her video is down, she said.
Okay, let's start off with the policy. Joe, you have anything to report?
There we go. With policy, there are some things on the agenda that are going to be second readings. We had a policy alert that was 222. And we had some revisions on, and you'll see the list on the agenda. We had a few revisions for first readings. And the new ones are lead testing of water in schools and remote public board meetings during a declared emergency. Family leave. Let's see. And the rest were just revisions on the policies and regulations. There wasn't, there, you'll see one on there also about a couple of abolished policies having to do with New Jersey Family Leave Insurance Program and school safety.
Are there any questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Guerillo. Curriculum instruction, Ms. Cook? We'll come back to that. Can we have athletics, Ms. Breach?
Just give me a second. Give me a second. I'm trying to get my info up. Problem with my computer. Can you bypass me?
Yeah, okay. Ms. LaRocco?
Okay, with regard to finance, first thing we should point out, in light of the deadline for submitting the tentative budget to the county, we're going to need to schedule a meeting on Thursday, March 18th, prior to our March 25th board meeting to go through the budget and have tentative approval to give to the county. We may then have to also adjust for the final approval our April board meeting, which is currently April 22nd. So please be aware as Jeff, Sancho, others put out information that may be changing or adding meetings as we go into March or shifting times as we go into April. We're hoping in about a week to 10 days, as the auditor just alluded to, we're putting together the budget. Remember, the state is doing two things. We were under the assumption going in that they were cutting our aid $5.8 million and then doing a formula that says our local fair share is still over $10 million short. So we're addressing both those things. And in about 10 days, we're hoping to put out, we're really planning on $2.5 million as a revenue increase. And then we can get out to the board kind of buckets of other information. As the auditor mentioned, there could be operational rollover. There can, there's going to be savings due to resignations and retirements where the district has determined they can combine jobs and not necessarily replace them. We talked about some some specific cuts then of what's remaining. We're looking at our current curriculum contract and whether we go to a process with more of train the trainer after we've had that contract for about three or four years with that company that we can make a substantial reduction to and try to get out kind of the general areas. And you see some numbers as we try to hit that. But before I mention a couple of other things, then getting some texts, and I guess the governor spoke, do we have a new number we want to throw out there about what we're going to have to hit in terms of the budget, Jeff?
Yeah, so the governor gave his address, his budget address on Tuesday, as is required by statute. They are then required to release state aid numbers for school districts within 48 hours after his address. The number that was released showed a reduction in adjustment aid for the district of about $6.67 million. We had been looking at 5.86, and the number that came out was obviously higher than that. So that's the number we're working with, and the number we'll have to address.
Okay, so since our meeting, now it's another million dollars of...
About $800,000 additional.
Yeah, okay, thank you. So we'll be getting out more information than leading up to this March 18 meeting will be then, as I understand it, just about the budget. And our regular business meeting is on the 25th.
Correct.
Okay. We just heard about the comprehensive annual audit. I think that's very good news. And again, kudos to Jeff, Ivy, Sancho for their work on that. There was a walkthrough at Obama, we can discuss with building and grounds. And the other bad news is the elevator bid at MLK Upper Elementary came back significantly higher than what our consultant had estimated. The committee discussed and with administration, and we're looking at canceling the bid and now re-advertising at a later date. And that concludes the...
Any questions?
I just had one. Dominic, you think we're having another finance committee between now and me?
Yes, yes. We'll have a meeting prior to and try to put a little more meat on the bones of the groupings of what we're doing and then prior to our full board meeting.
Yeah, the Thursday night meetings for that month is going to be moved up one week. So we were supposed to have the meetings on the 18th. Those Thursday night meetings will be moved up to the week before, 11. I had to do quick math, sorry. Any questions, comments?
Hi, Dom. Sorry, I have a question about the $800,000 and change. Is there a specific bucket that that's from? Maybe it's a question for Jeff, too, but is there like a specific bucket that it's...
No, no, that's just the new number of the state aid reduction. So there has to be a comprehensive look where we thought we were hitting a number of $5.8 million through both revenue increases and cuts. And now it's $800,000 more than that, at least.
Dom, I just had one more comment. It would be helpful if everybody actually knew what the formula was, because then you could be prepared and actually know what your numbers are going to be before, you know, the day of the budget address. And now you found out that something's wrong, it's different.
I'm constantly amazed by the budget process followed in New Jersey from the governor and the legislature on down. I would, I would agree that there could be a better way to do this where you don't get a hard number until a few weeks when you've got to finalize the budget. But I think we're attacking the governmental status quo on that.
Well, I think we're, we're about three years into S2 now. So we pretty much do know that this is happening every year where we estimate one number and it's a little higher. So I think we should, you know, moving forward, try to do a little extra, because keep it, we keep in mind knowing that this is the number that we think, but it's probably going to be slightly more. So it's almost like we're gonna cut, we're gonna have to cut deeper in anticipation of this happening each and every time.
Yeah, we're gonna have three more years. I can submit that. You know, we can, hold your breath. I saw that our state senator is proposing a bill whereby cuts for districts like ours will be $500,000 less if we choose to engage in the assessment and planning of some kind of regionalization. We can also, and Barb gave me some comments, and I'll finalize that. We can make the request to him that also, can there be any extension of S2 showing what we've accomplished? You know, I think I'd like it to be out there as to what the district has accomplished in these now three budgetary years of S2. There's been, there's been real movement toward greater efficiency while not losing educational quality in what we've been doing. And we've been moving the local fair share that started, I believe, just prior to our S2 budgets. Our local fair share was around $7 million. And I think after this budget year, we will be at, check me here, Jeff, but I think around $13 million.
Right, so at the fiscal '21, we're probably around $10.7. And as you said, if we add another two and a half, that'll put us to about 13.
So there's been great progress.
So we're gonna move on to the next. Connie, are you ready?
Yeah, I have my audio up, my video, so I'm having a problem with my computer. So can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, so we met on the 17th. We spoke about the upcoming Section 3 of our winter sports events, which is going to start in March, which includes the volleyball and our track. We also were speaking about our status of our fields, trying to getting prepared for our spring season. Mr. Sosa is working on that with our landscapers, also looking into possibly getting indoor, purchasing indoor batting cages to help, and looking into the status of our outdoor batting cages along with some track repairs that need to be done. The one thing that came out the past month was, it was advertised on some web services that we had, our sports were being streamed. That's not correct. We do not have an agreement as of now with, you know, a sports channel to be streamed. Some of our opponents do have access for streaming equipment, and they are going to share that with us. But as of right now, we're looking into possibly APTV or some other affiliate that we can get that even maybe having something with our own kids to do something with some streaming. It's probably not going to happen this season, but hopefully we'll look into that into the fall. The government, of course, you know, did change the spectators for indoor sporting events to allow two individuals per student. Of course, in the springtime, that's going to change, outdoor track and everything's gonna, it's gonna, we'll be outside. So that whole waiting for the update on that. We're still working with the virtual award ceremony to incorporate both last year awards recipients and this year's award recipients. Hopefully, next month, we'll have a little bit more, you know, date on when that's going to happen. We're gonna have to, you know, get some of the students, you know, a lot of them are at college right now to try to get them back to do some filming. And we're also looking into possibly rehabbing tennis courts. Have an outside individual that might want to help us, but he is in the middle of some personal tragedy in his life, so that's gonna take a little backseat for now. Hopefully, next month, I'll have a little bit more with that. The agenda, the meetings are, you know, on our website if you guys have any questions regarding some of the things that were on the minutes. I welcome any questions, and hopefully I can answer them.
Nope. Any questions or comments? No? Okay, we're gonna move on to buildings and grounds?
Hello, good evening. So buildings and grounds, we met February 18th, and we went over a few things. We had a facility use request. Basically, the district received an inquiry from Ultimate Sports Camp stating that they wanted to use our facility. They would pay us. They wanted to use the high school, the high school fields through June 24th and August 20th for 200 students. And they say that, they claimed that they would pay us $250 to use our gym and cafeteria and the fields in the lake. So we just asked for a formal proposal to be submitted. So once that proposal do come, we're gonna do our due diligence and, you know, see if that's the right fit for us. We also received another inquiry from Lake House Music. They inquired about conducting the softball game in June, but they haven't submitted a proposal as well, so we're waiting on that. Following up with COVID-19 protocols, the custodial department continues to follow all sanitizing and COVID-19 protocols, hourly wipe downs, there's hand sanitizing stations, and disinfectant sprays. Trying to switch the AirPods. So as Dom stated previously, we did receive proposals, well, the bids for the elevators at Dr. Martin Luther King's Upper Elementary School. The bids were higher than the budget, so we're gonna cancel those and re-advertise. Moving on, we did have the central office. We continue with the central office relocation. We had the walkthrough on Tuesday. I have a scope here, a copy of the scope. So basically, we walked through with the architect. Architect, the estimate total project, this is just, you know, general construction, Skywalker exterior reconstruction, the ceilings, the floors, paint, changing the toilets, the toilets to adults instead of, to perform up the code for adults, came out to about $2,183,965. And that's not including the work that needs to be done in the stairwells, the exterior parking lot upgrades, and electrical service upgrades, and also furnishing. That doesn't include any of that. Also, we had the ESIP business case projects. We were contacted by the president of Energy Systems Group. They wanted, they changed their project lead. So now a conference call needs to be held with the new lead, and the district and district architect is being scheduled. And then the last, we had two proposals from Charity Kings. The first proposal was a partnership improving Barack Obama Elementary School. They said at no cost, they were going to improve the the buildings and the ground, the fields, they were going to improve them. They're gonna do all the repairs, the electric, the plumbing, HVAC. They're trying to, I guess they, they have, they submitted a proposal. We looked at the proposal. They submitted a proposal. We looked at the proposal. That who are, uh, to district attorney. As we're at with it right now. That's basically. Buildings and grounds. That's the updates. We did the what we stated the other day and. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. I have a question.
Okay.
Mr. Remy, you said, uh, for the high school, the use of that of the high school from June twenty fourth to August something, they they. They want to pay us $250?
Correct. From June twenty fourth to August twentieth. They would like to pay us $250,000 for the gym.
Thousand, okay.
Yeah, oh, $250,000, yes, um, to use the gym, cafeteria. Uh, the fields and the lake. Um, so we asked that a formal proposal be submitted. Um, so we're just waiting on that with all the details and everything, so they can be considered.
Okay, thank you. And one other question, if I may, in regards to. Uh, in regards to the Obama building. Um, he said two point one. Mill, and that does not include the furnace. Were they able to give an estimate on the cost of that, of replacing that? Hundred years.
Oh, no, the, um. Now, the furniture furniture is what I was saying. Um, they did. They didn't mention that. I'm gonna ask the architect.
Okay.
It's it's not. It's not on here as well. It's not on here on a scope.
Mr. Remy, if I may, it's Barbara.
Thank you.
All right, bye.
From my understanding from, uh, Mr. Hastings, if if I need to be corrected, that the boiler is fine right now. They. It was upgraded a little while ago. Is that not correct?
Right, so our boilers are old, uh, however, they work and. Our issue with the boilers basically is that right now they're either on or off. Uh, we have a bit of an issue with with temperature. And control systems on the boilers, so. Uh, we did look at that as part of potentially the ESIP project. Uh, and we've also spoken to the architect about. Uh, what the options are there, but that is not included in the. Uh, price that Mr. Remy referenced by the architect.
Correct.
Is it possible that we would be able to get an estimate? In case we have any repairs?
Yes, we can ask the architect for an estimated cost.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Remy.
Uh, no problem, anytime.
And I just wanted to clarify, uh, and Mr. Remy stated that. We did have a cost analysis done by the architect, SSP Architectural. Uh, the priority one items, which were most of the items that he referenced, totaled about two point one, two point. Dollars, uh, and then there was a priority two, uh, which was significantly less, but that was about. Eighty five thousand, maybe Mr. Remy can correct me on that, but about three hundred and eighty thousand more.
Yes, um, I see here it has about three hundred and twenty. Three hundred and twenty thousand.
Right, so I think total cost for both of those, uh, priority items would be, again, back to the number that we've talked about, which is about two and a half million.
Yeah. Sure.
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions, uh. Back to this, uh, Ultimate Sports Camp. We're we're starting to talk about something that's, uh. Some some, uh, significant dollars here. Have we ever worked with them before? I mean. Um, I understand the committee saying, uh, you know, we want to see a formal proposal, but, I mean. Maybe we want to do some initial vetting. On Ultimate Sports Camp. Uh, I don't know if the administration can do that, uh. This might be, you know, you know, a serious. Significant proposal for us to to consider. And, uh, I'm sure it's going to be. A little more complex. Terms of dealing with things, but, um. Uh, I'll I'll throw that. I'll throw that out. Um. My my second one is just a comment. I mean, I I read through those two proposals. Uh, I'm all for people, uh, anyone who's going to be supportive of the district, but for my. Former life on, you know, I'd I'd like to see, uh, I would typically, and what the district has been doing, takes the lead on. Seeking. Um. Grant funding and then. If there can be partnerships there. Knowing what grant I'm going for, I would then discuss with a nonprofit. Do you want to be a partner to this grant and determine the details as to who's doing what and. And vetting that partner as. Uh, I'll leave this to Adam, but as those proposals were drafted, I. I I didn't see a value to a general agreement to be. Doing. Uh, to committing to a a grant. Writing partner. So.
If I if I can, uh, yeah, without getting too much into, uh, attorney client advice, I did give, uh, an opinion to the board president. With regard to those proposals, um, and, um, yeah. The the short answer is those proposals could not be acted on, uh, at this time by the board. Uh, to the extent the board does have an interest in partnering. Um, there's a way that that should be done. Um, typically, when we're talking about then a concession contract. Which, um, should either be, uh. Awarded through the bidding process or a competitive contracting slash RFP process. Um, so there is a process for those types of services to the extent. The board wishes to engage, uh, in in or or solicit bids or RFP submissions. Uh, certainly I can work with, uh, the the administration and the business office. On, um, putting together some specifications so that we can, um, move ahead. Uh, if that's what the board would like to do.
So two things, um, on on the, um, Ultimate Sports Camp, what the the steps that we. I think that we're gonna take is we're gonna have them fill out. A standard, um, facilities request form. And then that's what Adam, um, suggested as the next step is to be so that we can. Begin the vetting process because we don't, we really want to consider all, um.
Correct. If I.
That's where we're starting. And then the other thing is that Adam said that he was going to make sure that. If we had an agreement with with them, that it was our agreement and we outlined everything. So that everything, um, we covered everything so that there was no holes where where anything can happen. You had some.
Yeah, if I could, um, I'm just cautious on discussing this too much in public yet. As there probably are going to be some negotiations that are needed. Um, and we're probably going to enter, if we were to move forward. And if the board looked favorably upon the, you know, the application or or the, uh, expression of interest. We would probably move ahead with, um, a little, something that's a little bit different from your typical facilities use. Uh, form, uh, I think that, uh, and and an organization such as this. Or the use such as this requires, um, a little bit more of an in-depth contract. So that things are spelled out. Um, so, you know, we do have kind of a framework of what is the interest is and. A, um, you know, again, a verbal. Uh, I should say, not not really verbal, but an informal, uh, offer of an amount. Uh, but a lot of the details remain sketchy. Um, and so, uh, you know, to the extent that. The board wants to discuss this any further, uh, my suggestion would be that we do it in executive session. Given the fact that we're probably talking about contract negotiations. And that is more, you know, more appropriately discussed and executed.
Okay, and then and then the second comment was about the two proposals. Um, Adam did advise that they they would be concession, but we did speak about. How, um, it would benefit the district to have something like that. So we spoke about maybe. Drawing up a bid or proposal and taking proposals to see if there are. Groups that would like to help us in in obtaining, um. Grants to fix different areas of the school district.
And again, we certainly can do that. I just need to get a direction from the board and I'm happy to help out and. Um, make sure that everything conforms with, uh, the requirements that we have under the different code.
So I have a question. This is Angela. Um, do we not have a grant writer ourselves? Mr. Hastings?
Yes, we do.
So are we, why aren't we able to use our grant writer? Because I'm I'm believing that the same thing that's available to other groups is available to our grant writer.
There's feedback.
Yes, we do have an individual on our team that writes grants. Um, this is not a result of what they're not able to do. This is more in response to us having received a proposal from the outside. And bringing it now to the board.
Are we voting on this tonight?
No, no, we're just, but we're just, we're discussing it tonight. To the extent that we, it's it's definitely an open conversation. Yes, we have a grant writer. But there's grant grant researchers too. So if. If we don't, if we don't put something out for bid or something, we can try to put that grant writer. On that task, but. At this point, I think in the district's history, we have to start looking at. Different ways to generate income. Um, so even if we don't go with this proposal, we have to start looking at different, different ways. Basically, I just repeated myself, different ways to generate income. That's that's where we are. We we cannot continue doing what we. We've been doing. Now, the grant writer has been here. We haven't directed him to do. This particular thing. So if that's what we want to do, then we can do that, or we can put it out for bid. And see if we can get professionals that. That can concentrate on on doing that because our grant writer is also writing grants for other things that have to do with educational aspects of the district.
I just have a comment, right, if I may. I think that, um, right now our concentration is, uh. Trying, moving central office and then, uh, we can. Think about ideas to fill the rest of Barack Obama. So that it benefits our district and our children. Um. So I think that if we're getting it, we're getting, it's good to talk about ideas, but I think we're getting ahead of ourselves right now. Uh, in in talking about. You know, different areas that we might be able to write grants for at this point. It's just my own opinion.
Any additional comments?
Um, yeah, I was gonna, um, before. Before these two, uh, proposals, were there any proposals prior, like I guess prior before me coming on the board? Were there any proposals before this? Anyone? Any organizations stating that they would, you know, write grants or pay for certain things? Was anything like that? Uh, any of that, no?
Under my, uh, since I've been the superintendent of schools, this is the first time that I've received something of this nature.
Okay.
And supporting and understanding. The, um, ongoing focus. In terms of communication, as I received this information in my office, I wanted to make sure that in a very timely manner. Per the board's directive, they received that communication.
Okay. Cool.
Can. Four questions. One, um, the different nonprofits on there, do they have, um. I work at the nonprofit industry and. Um. When it comes to nonprofits, what the board really needs to see is. Current nine nineties audited financial statements. And if this is really something that we want to to, um. You know, go forward with. Then we really want to get the best of the best. Um, we'd also want to see a record of of. Where, you know. Where these, are there any success stories or that kind of thing? So. I I agree with Barbara that we we're getting a little ahead of ourselves. I think the idea is is fantastic and we've been saying for a long time about. How we need an education foundation, um, that is separate from the schools like other school districts. Um. I just think that it needs to be done the right way and. We need to have all the, you know, we we need to have a, you know, a. Kind of a a history of 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 where there's been success with these different nonprofits.
Okay, I have I have another question as well. So like, so we did the walkthrough. So what's what's the next process? What's the next step? Because, uh. Because because this whole thing with this walkthrough and this relocation, I'm looking at articles. I'm reading articles from. Back in the day when I was an undergrad. So I'm talking over, you know. Like I graduated college undergrad in like twenty fourteen. And these are things that still going on still. So like, what's next? Like, what's what needs to happen? We need to get a definite answer. Are we gonna do it? Or? Are we not gonna do it? So that's all I'm trying to figure out, like, what's the next step moving forward? Can anyone answer that?
Uh, this is Barbara. Since I agree with you, Anthony, that we have to make a decision probably tonight about what direction we're gonna go in. Because, you know, the lease on that other building is going to be up, I believe, in a year and a half. And if there are things that have to be done, they have to be, they start right now. You know, whether, uh, you know, financials. Uh, the financial issue has to be addressed and then, um. You know, whatever kind of bids and this sort of thing that have to go out for the different items that are on that. That, um, punch list.
Okay. Thank you. And, um, uh, speaking of financials. Is is this something like, uh, we can get grants for, or this is something that the district will have to pay for? Completely out of their budget, completely out of our budget? Or is this something we can get assistance from outside?
So, uh, we've talked about this over the past couple of meetings, uh. And what we've put forward is, uh, a financing, a five-year financing. Um, of the cost of the project to be paid back over that time period. Uh, so taking into account the cost of the lease in our current location. Plus some additional funds, uh, to cover that five-year payback.
But we would be paying back who ourselves or?
No, we would take out a, let's let's say the total cost is two and a half million for round numbers. We finance that over five years, so we get a five-year loan or capital lease, if you will. A land lease, they also refer to it, uh, as, uh, so we get that money upfront. We use those funds to then pay for the improvements to the building. And then we create the payback schedule over five years. So that we would be paying, if it's two and a half over five, five hundred thousand a year, uh, to pay back that that loan.
Half of which we come from.
Okay.
Savings.
Thank you.
We have here.
And as Ms. Morris has noted, half of which would come from the savings of not paying rent where we currently are.
I mean, to that extent, Anthony was talking about, if the board so desires, we do have a resolution. That, um, that would be to move forward with, um. With the plans for Barack Obama. Um, if that's if that's what's desired. Because I know that we've been going around talking about what we're gonna do and we really have to, um. We have to, we have to decide.
I agree. We have to execute on something.
Yeah, it's Barbara. Since I agree, put it on the agenda and then have the vote, uh, the board vote to see what direction they want to go in.
Okay, uh, this is Joe again. Really quick, what what were the estimated costs for the the other plan of having the modular, um, things? I don't have any.
Like two, it was two.
Right, so the.
I believe it was around the same.
The cost for the rehab of of Obama was about two and a half million dollars. Uh, when we looked at our nine-ten Second Avenue or nine-fourteen Second Avenue. Uh, and then asked them to make adjustments, uh, to to a modular unit, it came in between two point one and then two point five.
So I guess the the big que, the 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 only difference is that, you know, if we do this, um. If we do the the. Moving of the admin offices to the Obama School and we take over the third floor over there. We've essentially, you know, staked our claim to the entire building. we've essentially, you know, staked our claim to the entire building. Whereas with the modular, it's, you know, it's, it's a, just a separate thing. It's a modular, um, construction. Am I correct with that?
Well, I think there's arguments for pros and cons on both sides, right? So if you add a modular, then you have Obama to do all kinds of activities up and down. However, once you have the module and spend the money on the module, then we have to find money to fix Barack Obama. So, I mean, I, I know that we don't have a lot of time to discuss it. So there is, you know, there are good sides on both. Um, but as for establishing ourselves in Obama, again, it's, it's a good thing because we'd be on the fourth, third floor. I just put another floor in Obama, don't worry. Uh, we'd be on the third floor and then we can have activities on the second and first floor. Um, but again, everything is like, we don't have unlimited funds. So it's basically like we have to decide what we're gonna do because it's not like we have millions. We, we're, we're talking about taking a loan out to, to even move into Barack Obama. So if we were gonna do the modular, we had to take a loan out to do the modular and then wouldn't have extra money to do anything in Barack Obama yet. So that's where we are. It's, it's kind of like, we have to make a decision where we, we, we have a, a small bucket of money, you know, and then we have to figure out what we're gonna use the bucket on.
So I, I have a question because, um, in reading that proposal, um, to do the grant writing, they had made, said that the building was unsafe for staff, students and visitors. So if we move the central office over there, when, when will they start doing the work on, on the Obama building?
I don't quite understand the question. Who, when, who will start doing?
I'm referring to the proposal that we had received from Charity King. So we're still talking, are we not? Is something?
No.
Oh, no.
Okay. Okay, no, sorry.
So, uh, Madam President, I guess we should put it on the agenda for our public meeting and then we should, uh, vote. Somebody can ask a direction.
So your suggestion is to put on a gentle tonight?
Yes, ma'am. The sooner we start, uh, the quicker it gets accomplished.
I agree with you there, Barbara.
So you're making a motion?
Oh, not right now. This is a work session.
Oh, this is workshop.
The resolution, you can add it to the agenda.
Barbara, can you repeat that?
This is a work session and then the public session, you can, uh, the public meeting, you can add an item to the agenda, which would be this resolution at some time during the meeting.
The other thing that I was gonna say is if, uh, Madam President, is it, is it appropriate to ask for a timeline? For whichever one we choose, like is it appropriate to ask for some sort of a timeline? So we have an idea of what hap, what's gonna happen when and the, the timeframe that we need to get done by.
I think it would be smart to ask for a timeline. So we know, you know what, what we're dealing with. So it's more than appropriate.
Yeah.
Um, so we're almost done. Let's do, let's do, um, curriculum and instruction and then we'll move into the regular meeting. Ms. Cook?
Hi. Okay, so I need approval for the development and submission of the idea, uh, CCLC supplemental fund grant application. The purpose of this grant is to increase the presence of students with disabilities in the 21st CCLC after school program. And the amount of this award is $25,000. Um, the approval for the P I R T team to attend a weekly virtual training called the Pyramid Birth to Five Series. The training will provide the P I R T team formal training on the pyramid model, which they are required to facilitate, um, professional development for all early childhood staff members annually. The total cost is $800 for all four members. Uh, lastly, the approval for Fatima McCoy Len, uh, Leonard, a student at St., uh, State Peters University, Doctor of Educational Leadership Program, to conduct research study at Asbury Park High School.
The other thing that was brought up about the, um, the young lady from, um, St. Peters, um, Barbara wanted to know if we could, um, have a copy of the research afterwards or like what the end result was. Can I speak to that?
I don't have that.
No, no, um, Madam, Madam Superintendent is gonna speak on it.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. A part of the doctoral studies and research is that anytime any research is done in this manner, it's anonymous and, uh, to protect the researchers and the commentary. Also, as a part of fulfilling the requirements for the doctoral program, this research will be published and hence made available for anyone's review. But any indicators and referencing to the Asbury Park School District, and that doesn't just count for this one, but that's standard from the Institutional Review Board, or otherwise known as IRB. That's just how research is done in, um, in that setting.
So in short, no.
In short, in short, in short, anyone and everyone will have the opportunity if they want to research the dissertation to read it once it's published. However, any references to the Asbury Park School District will be left out.
Okay, um, any additional questions or comments? Can I have a, a motion to close?
Uh, excuse, excuse me, Madam President. I have a question. I have a question.
Okay.
Um, earlier you had mentioned that our meetings were gonna change from March. We won't go to, it's not gonna be a 25th. It's gonna be the 18th and the 11th.
No, it's going to be the 25th and the 18th.
Okay, cause I, I heard you, so the 11th is not included.
The, the 11th, so originally the workshops that are the Thursday night workshops had to be moved because on the 18th, we're gonna have a meeting for the preliminary budget. So we moved the, the, the workshops that were gonna be on the 18th, we moved them to the 11th.
Okay, just, uh, I may have to change my committee meeting on the 10th. I'll advise everybody.
You, you might have to move it to the 10th?
No, I might have to move it from the 10th. I have, uh, surgery on the night.
Your committee meeting is gonna stay on that Wednesday. We're only moving the Thursday, um, committees.
Yeah, I'll advise everybody. I might have a, I might have a problem.
Okay.
You know, all right, thanks.
Um. Okay, we have one more, um, we have an addendum to be added.
So, uh, after our curriculum instruction committee meeting was conducted uh, under Dr. Christie Howard Morris's leadership, along with the principal.
No, y'all.
Along with Principal Baumgartner from the high school. We were very fortunate to be approached by the New Jersey Manufacturing Extension Program. I have Dr. Howard Morris on the line. She's gonna provide just a very, very brief overview. I did forward after a conversation with Madam President, uh, regarding the last minute agenda item because of the timing of the meeting. To, um, secure its placement on tonight's agenda, I forwarded, uh, to every board member for your review. A little bit about the program. I did receive a question back about the program. I'm going to allow Dr. Howard Morris to give a little more explanation.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, so, um, as Ms. Gray stated, I was approached, uh, with regard to a program for our seniors. So, um, by the, um, New Jersey Manufacturing, um, um, program, uh, extension program. And so what, essentially what it is going to do is going to provide our students with a national certification and two subject matters. One, they will have a, um, opportunity to get a certification in the, um, logistics as a logistics associate, uh, certified logistics technician. Or they can get, um, a certification in what's called the Certified Production Technician. Uh, it's an online program. They'll have to complete between 80 and 100 hours. And, uh, it's something that they can do, um, outside of school. So, um, when my, so I met with Ms. Baumgartner, what she wanted to also do is, um, include the CTE teachers to also help if to get some hours with the students. But in addition to, um, our staff, the program provides and, um, a staff member that will help them with their, um, with their studies. So, uh, and that's free of charge. We don't have to pay anything for the program. Um, and after the students complete their, um, the program, the organization will help them, um, find employment. They'll circulate their, uh, resumes and they'll also, um, provide them with, um, jobs that are available for them to interview. And that's essentially, and the other part that we are able to utilize is when, because of some of our students, um, unfortunately have a lot of, um, buyback hours that they have to complete. And this would fall in line with our option two, um, program at the high school where they can, you know, take the 80 to 100 hours and, um, put that towards their buyback hours. Does anyone have any questions?
And lastly, I just want to reiterate that this program is free. Free at no cost to the district. The reason why it is included as an addenda is because it does require us to enter into a memorandum of understanding, which was also attached to the email for your review.
Not, not to belabor this either. This is exactly, um, some of what we've been talking about, giving certifications and opportunities to our students that are not college bound or college is not their first choice. And it's coming at no cost to the district. Any comments or questions? Okay, so we have to do a quick, uh, public participation. Um, so we're gonna open the floor up. Uh, state your name, your address and your comment and or question.
So we can take public comments through our public comment mailbox, publiccomment@asburypark.k12 nj.us. You can also raise your hand or post a comment in the comment section. And if you're a caller, you can hit star, I believe it's star three, and you'll put, put into the queue to make a comment. So we'll give it a chance to populate. Well, we did check the public comment email address and there are no public comments there. Mr. Branigan, is there anything in our comment section or is there a caller in the queue?
At this time, no one has raised their hand and there are no, uh, entries in the chat.
Okay, we're gonna close the public comment section.
We're gonna close that at 7:10 PM.
Hey, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Everyone, any, um, all in favor? Anybody opposed? Okay, you're not closed.
Can we take, can we take a five, five-minute break? Just a five-minute break before we open, uh, public?
Oh, yeah, well, okay, if the runs are back.
Carol, I heard that.
Okay, we're gonna pause for five minutes. It is now 7:10. So in five minutes, we'll be back for the regular meeting. Thank you.
Um. Anthony?
Yes.
During the meeting, you shouldn't be talking to someone else because you're, it could be violating the sunshine law. It's a public meeting. Any other conversation outside the realm of the board would be, could be a violation. Cause nobody can hear what you're talking about. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Uh, you might want to talk to, um, Mr. Weiss about that. Okay.
Okay, well, I apologize.
Barb.
I'll be right back, Joe.
Where are you going?
I'm not telling you.
Remy, I know you were just singing. Don't worry.
Thanks.
I was doing the same thing.
I'd just like to remind everybody, you're still, uh, public and you're still being heard. So consideration.
Good night, Madam President.
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay, we're back, guys. In accordance with the, with the provision of the Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA 10, 4D F 6 P L 1975 C 231 S 1 amended in 2006, C 70 S 2, the Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending a notice of the time, date, location, and to the extent known the agenda of this, of this meeting to the Asbury Park Press and a new poster on January 8, 2021 via email. Copies of this notice have also been placed with the Administration Building Bulletin Board, District Schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with City Clerk on January 8, 2021. The mission of the Asbury Park School District is to provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skill and character to proceed, to succeed in a diverse, evolving global society. Roll call please, Ms. Henry, please.
Oops. All right, as we take roll call, please unmute yourselves and put yourself back on mute. Ms. Alvez Anderson?
Here.
Ms. Breach?
Here.
Ms. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Grillo?
Here.
Mr. LaRocca?
Here.
Mr. Remy?
Here.
Mr. Saunders? See you there. Okay. Uh, Ms. Lizinski?
Here.
And Ms. Etienne?
Here.
Can we all rise to the class room, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Joe, our resident flag presenter.
One day I'll get it right in the right, the right direction.
Okay, so our presentation was already done, correct?
Yes, our, uh, annual review was done earlier.
Superintendent's presentation?
I have, uh, no presentation, just some remarks. Our seventh annual Black History Month Extravaganza, which has been renamed our Black Hurstery Extravaganza, will now, um, be in March. If the date has changed, it will be virtual, March 12th. And as a result of the date change, we are also using that opportunity to incorporate Women's History Month. So we will have a Black Hurstery Women's Hurstery Extravaganza, March 12th. And more information will follow for your review.
Just as of March. So.
That's a bad day.
So, well, we're gonna put a new review into it. So, um, that, that completes what I want, you know, what I was going to share tonight.
Thank you very much. Do you have a?
Black History Month and, and women. It, it are resident, uh, awardee get to attend her ceremony prior to the meeting today?
Yes, I did, actually. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much. In my, thank you. In my acceptance speech, I mentioned that it's not possible to leave and do the work that I do without acknowledging Board of Education, as well as the leadership family and members of my other organizations for which I am a member of. So thank you for assisting me and co-laboring with me in this work as we continue to change the trajectory of people's lives.
That completes my report. Thank you, Madam Superintendent. So that's Madam Superintendent's presentation and report. So now we will be moving on to the public participation part. The floor is now open.
Again, you'll need to say your name and address. You'll have three minutes to make a comment. We have our public comment email address that you can send an email to or you can post something in the comments or the raised hand function of the software here. Or if you're on the phone, you can hit star three to go into a queue and we'll recognize you there. We'll take a moment for that to queue up. Right at this time, we have no public comments in our public comment email address. Mr. Branigan, do we have any comments or phone callers?
At this time, there's no entries in the chat and no one has raised their hand.
Okay, public participation is now closed?
We're closing public at 7:22.
Madam State Monitor? You will be receiving a report shortly, just updating the last exit report since the the issue of COVID. I didn't feel that it was completely fair to do an in-depth. So you will see that there's an addendum to the last one and that I have submitted to the state. And you will be receiving copies. If you have any questions, certainly at the next meeting, I would be more than happy to respond to them. And that's the only thing tonight.
Thank you very much. Acceptance of the minutes, anything?
Yes, could I have a motion for the acceptance of our minutes on page A1, 10A and B?
Move it, move it. Second. Joe, second.
Moved by Ms. Lozinski, seconded by Mr. Grillo. Comments or questions? Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo? Ms. Abes Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. LaRocca?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes, and I finally got my wasn't as computer literate as I thought I was.
Well, we appreciate your efforts. Ms. Etienne?
Yes.
Okay. We'll not be presenting the minutes of the closed session because we can send them out to you for review yet.
Okay, at this point in time, I would like, I would ask for some agenda.
I would. Good evening, members of the board. Madam President, I'm requesting consent agenda for items B1 to B5 and all attachments.
Need a second?
Grillo, second.
Moved by Ms. Lozinski, seconded by Mr. Grillo. Comments, questions?
Yes, roll call, please, Mr. Hastings.
B1 through B5. And we have the addenda, was the addenda included in those items as well?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Ms. Abes Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. LaRocca?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Ms. Etienne?
Yes.
All items carry?
Mr. Hastings, could you write to us?
Yes, Madam President. Could I have a motion for all items C1, number one to C3, number eight?
I'll move it.
Second.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Lozinski, seconded by Mr. LaRocca. Any questions or comments?
Roll call, please, Mr. Hastings.
That's all. Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
Mr. LaRocca?
Yes.
Ms. Abes Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Yes, abstained on C2, 5A.
Thank you. Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes, and I have to abstain on JCPN, New Jersey Natural Gas, New Jersey American Water, and any reimbursements to me.
Thank you. Mr. Remy? Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
And Ms. Etienne?
Yes.
All items carry?
All right, um, this concludes our meeting. Is there any additional comments? Anything, anyone wants to add before we close?
Madam President, Ms. Barbara Lozinski?
Yes.
I'd like to propose that you read the resolution regarding Obama, Central Office Movement of Obama, so we can move on.
I don't have it. I don't have it. Mr. Hastings, do you have to have a copy of that resolution?
I do not.
I do not have it and I do not have a copy to read. Mr. Hastings had given me a paper copy last time. It's not even in my email.
In that event, could we vote on it at the early March meeting?
Yeah, we can, we can do it on the 18th. Madam Vice President, can we do it on the 18th? Barbara?
Question, question. What is it that we're looking for? You said the proposal?
The resolution to move forward with Barack Obama.
It's to direct the administration to start the process to move Central Office to Barack Obama.
If, Ms. Lozinski, if you'd like, I don't know what topic we need to look for, but if you can orally make the motion and I can walk you through it with me, please.
Sure, I can make a motion that the board directs the administration to take the steps necessary to start the process of moving Central Office to the Barack Obama Elementary School, which would include plans, RFPs, aid and financial requirements that we have to, whether it's lending or borrowing from whatever institution we need to.
And if I could, yeah, I'd like to add to that to make sure everything's covered. And the board authorized the Business Administrator Board Secretary to take whatever steps are necessary to effectuate this action of the board.
All I would need is a motion.
Motion?
Motion.
Second.
All right, so it's moved by Mr. Remy and seconded by, was it Mr. LaRocca? Who was my second? Mr. Saunders?
We need to, wait, wait, wait. Any discussion?
Questions, discussion?
Is it appropriate to is it appropriate to hear from the, you know, to give some time for the board members to discuss this a bit?
We're open to discussion now.
Oh, okay. I couldn't hear.
Okay, Hastings, roll call.
Mr. Remy?
Here.
Is that a yes on the motion?
Oh, yes, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Ms. Abes Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes, yes.
Mr. LaRocca?
Yes.
Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
And Ms. Etienne?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I'd like to make a motion to close this meeting, if I may.
Second.
Motion to close from Ms. Lozinski, seconded by Ms. Etienne. Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
Ms. Etienne?
Yes.
Ms. Abes Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Mr. LaRocca? Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Thank you. Meeting's adjourned.
Stay everybody.
Stay well, everybody.
Yeah, stay safe, stay blessed.
It's a vaccine.
Yeah, have a good one.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Bye.